This is our work session for the month of June. And we're getting started a little bit late. We had some technical difficulties, but we have a pretty full schedule and and we're gonna move along with it. First item is the approval of the agenda, which everybody's had an opportunity to review. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Chairman panel, I'm going to approve the agenda as presented.
Second motion.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Any appeals? And the motion passes. So we're gonna go ahead and get on into the agenda part here. Dr. Jeff Church, morning, head of auxiliary services.
Good morning. We have for you surplus sales items for this past school year, and it's just for your information only. We sold $6,274 of their surplus. Any questions on that?
Yeah, exactly, gut deals.
Gut deals, it's all on gut deals, yes sir. Second part of our presentation, guys here, he's gonna talk to you a little bit about our summer feeding and our feeding distribution program.
Good morning, everybody. Board chairman, board members, superintendent. I'd like to just tell you a little bit about where we are with our summer feeding program at this point, or COVID-19, whatever you want to refer to it. Right now, as of this week, we've served 574,818 meals. With that said, 1,300 kids get it delivered on yellow school buses, and the other 2,000 are car pickups. And our numbers for car pickup seem to be dropping a little bit. We've served as many as 68,000, and this week we've served 48,000 meals. So it's kind of a, kind of a drop. So we're gonna make some changes to our program. As of the ninth, we're going to still do our bus delivery, and, but we're gonna do it a little different. Instead of doing it all in one day, we're gonna split it up, and we're gonna do South Caldwell on Tuesday, West Caldwell on Wednesday, and High Brighton District on Thursday. And all of them are gonna be packed at High Brighton and delivered out from there, because that way the buses are closer to the bus garage, and any incidental things, we can get that taken care of.
God, when you deliver, you're delivering seven days worth of meals when you do a delivery, right?
Yes, sir. Seven days, seven lunches, and seven breakfasts. And that's a lot of milk. So we actually also, and it doesn't mean that much to y'all, but we're gonna switch and give out gallon of milk instead of cartons of milk, starting on the ninth also. So we're doing that to make it easier to handle and less refrigeration space for the parents. So hopefully that'll help with everybody.
That's what helps federal guidelines, you have to provide.
Yes, you have to provide eight ounces of fluid milk per meal, so that's two cups a day. It'll actually give them a little bit more milk than what we have to, but it's actually 16 cents cheaper. So it's kind of a wash for us.
God, if there are preschool children birth to age five in the family, are we allowed to deliver to them as well if we're already making the stop there?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, most of the times, the times I've ridden the bus, it was however many children's in the room, or in the house, they leave that many bags, and they got a list. I mean, they do a great job of organization, because they know, like, you pull up to this house, you got three kids here, and they go off and then, you know, we, one week, we were on there, I was on there, they actually had to change.
If there, if there are preschool families that don't have school age children, they contact?
The school that they would go to, and they add it to the list, and then that list is compiled, and then the bus drivers have it, and then they deliver it from there.
Will that manner still do the same through the summer? Would they still contact the homeschool of their district? Because you are doing a change, so just so the public knows that that would be a continuation.
Yeah, that, that way everybody can be serviced.
Correct.
From that point of view.
Yes, right.
But we're gonna do it from the homeschool, and then from the school to the bus routes. The only difference really is the Tuesday, South Caldwell District, Wednesday, West Caldwell, and High Brighton on Thursday. That's the only major difference with that. I do wanna thank everybody that has participated and helped, and I know Mr. Panel has been out there, I've seen Dr. Phipps out there, and I'm not, I'm not sure about the rest of you. I think Kathy's been out there a good bit too, and you've been out there. So I do appreciate that. Y'all know, it does two things. One, our cafeteria staff who is working so hard to try to get this together and a change of what we're doing, but also they see that y'all care enough about our program, and y'all have, you know, shown that over and over and over, and it really helps their, with their morale. So thank y'all very much for coming out and helping with that. And all our teachers and principals have come out and helped, and that's been great too. So I do wanna thank everybody for that.
And please let them know how much we appreciate their frontline services.
Thank you, thank you.
God, with the pickups, you mentioned the bus drop-offs. What about pickups in the summertime?
Summertime, thank you for bringing that up. We'll still be doing the same, not, excuse me. We'll be doing Granite Falls Elementary, Gamol Elementary, and Bowmeade Elementary as our three pickup sites, and that's Tuesday only. And it'll be from 11 to 1:00, and 4:00 to 6:00.
11 to 1:00, 4:00 to 6:00.
Yes, sir. And we'll be sending out flyers, and Libby's gonna be doing a lot of publicity for us to try to make sure everybody knows that this will be changed. But everybody that gets a meal this week will get a flyer to let them know that, of the changes.
God, those will be only the pickup, the summer, the three summer sites that you've mentioned?
The three sites, yes ma'am, those are pickup sites.
The clients' pickup, no, no buses, is my question.
No, 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 we're gonna do buses too.
Buses too.
Buses will, the change on the buses will be, South Caldwell District will be on Tuesday, West Caldwell District will be on Wednesday, and Thursday will be High Brighton District.
All summer long.
All summer long, at this point.
That was the question. Thank you, sir.
I'll send y'all a flyer, just to let you know what everybody's getting, and just in case y'all get any questions or whatever. We're just now starting to get all this changed. Okay? Any other questions? Thank y'all very much. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. Dr. McKellen?
Good morning. You have, will be helping with us this morning to present about the current educational program and where we are headed for. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good to see everyone. Good to see people. I wanted to talk to you and give you a little update about CTE. Every time I have talked or met with you, I talk about the Perkins Five, changes that we have for this year. One of the big changes will be in the local, what used to be called a local plan, it's now called a local application. And it used to be a really thick document that we would present to the school board in May or June each year, and that has changed. And we don't have to submit that every year. Now it's only every other year. Instead of it being a four-year projection, it's a two-year plan, and we only have to do those every other year now. So this will be the first year we're doing it. Parts one through five will be sent directly to DPI, and they'll approve that part. Part six is what I have submitted to Kathy already and Dr. McKellen, and that's the assurances and certifications. And that's the part that the school board will review at the next meeting, I guess, and do the signature, the signature page on the back. It looks similar to the one that we've done in the past. So what I wanna do though, so that you still feel like part of the updating the local plan or the projection, is to give you kind of a summary of what's, what's included in the plan, bring you up to date on some data that we have, and kind of let you see what we're thinking about moving toward in the future. To give you an update of what I know of the data, you know, our spring semester was cut short, so right in the middle of everything we had planned and projected, it came to a screeching halt. We had to regroup and try to figure out what we were gonna do to still try to accommodate our students. The three pages that you see at the top, I do these every year, and that's 2017, 18, and 19. The number here is a total number of credentials, so it's 2013, total number of credentials when we first started kind of keeping track of this. Credentials are very important. It's the industry recognize credentials, and the students, when they graduate, they take these with them when they go to apply for a job. They're already certified and ready to go in some of the areas that they need.
If it's not sharing correctly, I need to apologize to me.
Okay. So we have kind of worked on this so that we can do more and offer more. The credentials cost money, and we have to pay for those, and we have to have the funding for those. But we've been able to increase. We've been able to get our teachers on board. We've been able to get them certified so that they can offer the credentials instead of us having to go to a third party and bring somebody in to do some of those. So you can see each year we have grown, and we had our little party in December with the fifth in the state celebration. That was the cause of the 4,616 you see on the end there. So as we still continue to move forward with this, fall semester, the total number of credentials was 3,116. That was just in one semester alone. So we were on track, if you wanna multiply that for spring semester, for 6,200 for this school year. But then March 13th came, and everything came to a stop. Still yet, in spring semester, we were able to get, up until Friday, I've got the number, 2040. We still have a week or two for students to be able to do that. We've switched to a remote platform for students to be able to give their credentials and earn those. And our teachers have worked so hard. They had to learn the system and figure out how to do this remotely, and get it all switched over. And I'm so proud of our teachers. They just jumped right on this. We have a couple weeks, I think, that students can still earn these, so our numbers may change, but it's gonna be around 5,100, I believe, is where our total for the year will be. That's my guess. Another piece of data that I have now that I didn't have last time I met with you is our post-assessment data, and that's 88.2% remain the same. But we were 13th in the state, and that'll bring us up to 11th in the state. So we're moving ahead a little bit with that. Now, these two pieces of data, I've always felt like are very important, and I've always pushed on these. Out of the eight indicators, I've always pushed on these two. And these are two that are gonna remain with Perkins Five. The credential piece was not in Perkins Four. It is gonna be in Perkins Five, so we're gonna be held accountable for these numbers, and we're gonna be in a really good position to move forward with this when they start, when they're able to collect data. Okay. So looking forward at some of our programs, I wanted to go over some changes and some things that we're gonna do. Agriculture, we have a position open, which is called high school. We're planning on refilling that position, and it's post double week right now. We have our agriculture teachers by law are 12-month employees, so we will have them this summer. One of the projects I wanna give teachers this summer is to take their agricultural curriculum and convert it to virtual curriculum, so we can put it out in our virtual academy, so students can take these courses online, even homeschool students in private school, or anybody can sign up for these courses. And up until March, I thought it was kind of impossible for some of our CTE hands-on courses to be done virtually. So now I see how creative our teachers have become and how we really can make this happen. And I can even see it being really a good positive thing. Even our foods teachers, I've heard stories across the state of food teachers that would video themselves at home, and would stay at home, order fixing dinner for their family, and video, and send it out to their students. And here's a dish you need to make this week, here's why. So they did their lessons all week, and then the students would video themselves making the dish at home for their families and send it back into the project. So it really can, even, even a foods class, which is a hands-on, we have all the labs for that, it really can be done virtually. So the agriculture classes, where agriculture wanted to, we're thinking, some of the projects that are in those classes are the whole life cycle of a plant, and growing a garden, and how to do the garden. You know, the garden thing now is, you know, with everybody kind of grow their own food and that kind of thing. So we're thinking especially with the homeschool students, that creating some virtual classes for Horticulture One and Two would be a positive thing for our programs. Ben Conley at South Caldwell also expressed an interest at the beginning of the year that he would like to add Agriculture Mechanics One and Two in curriculum. And I thought that was a great idea to move forward. We don't need to stay stagnant in what we've been doing for the last 20 years as we move forward. What's important with this course is that it includes a welding curriculum. So we're gonna be building welding stations, and we were right in the middle of getting ready to do that. In March, we ordered the equipment, all the equipment's there. We're gonna have our masonry students come in and build the block station walls, and have a contractor come in with a metal bent, bending on top. And maintenance is gonna bring in the, do the electrical, but we, we're at a standstill right now with that. So when we get students back, and they get ready to start working again on some of those projects, that's gonna be one of the first things we do, is get our welding stations finished up. That will lead then, the students can, if they want to progress in welding, then they have their certificates that are available in the community college, and we can even do those through CCP while they're still high school students. Our Family Consumer Science, Foods One and Two, it was kind of projected in the future that I would like to add those virtually also, so that we can pair up, Horticulture One and Foods One, wanna pair those together. While the students are growing their gardens or growing their foods, they can be cooking the food or preparing it in Foods One class. So fall semester, imagine a, maybe a homeschool student taking Port One and Foods One together, and then in spring, they'll take Port Two and Foods Two. So it pairs up, and it's a year-long portion of the, in these two program areas. We found that Friday that we got a grant, so that it's set up, having to wait a year to add this Foods One and Two. We'll be able to start that this summer, and we have a teacher that's ready to convert that curriculum. We can pay the teacher to do that. We also have enough money to purchase food. For the students to come in, if it's a virtual class, they can come in like once a week, pick up their box of food. The condition of the grant was we purchased the food from local farmers or local sourcing. So we're gonna be doing that, and then tying in the locals, kind of like the farm and table idea, or the farmer's tools, like the following idea. So that's something that's gonna be brand new, just found out on Friday, that we're gonna be doing that. Another course for our students that are here in Caldwell County Schools, Intro to Culinary Arts, we're gonna be adding that course also.
Before you go to that screen, those virtual classes, are those ones that carry the credentials? Will they be able to credential in those classes?
They can, and before I was, you know, kind of hesitant to open up any virtual classes with credentials, because we didn't know how they could get credentials at home, but now they can, because our students are getting credentials at home now. So it's, it's remote, the platform, the third-party vendors that serve most of our credentials have come up with a way, do those remotely. A proctor, most of the time, sits in on the online tests that they're taking. Sometimes they have to have a video going, make sure nobody else is sitting there taking their test form and that kind of thing. So they've really come up with some creative ways to make that happen, so we can do that virtually also. Or, you know, we have to set up a laptop for them to come in, one time, two times, they can come in and perform their skills and do that, we can make that happen. Business and Finance courses, they took a hit this year because, you know, the legislature removed our personal finance classes. It's our course that we had the most enrollment. I think it was over 400 students this year signed up for personal finance, so we're losing that. And also DPI removed our multimedia webpage design, so we've had to add some new courses. The big change that we're gonna have in the business classes, we're adding our Adobe Labs. We had Adobe at Flight Science Academy, and we had it at High Brighton in the printing department there with Ranger Tucker. And we have been upgrading those labs this year. Ranger got a new lab, and Guy at Flight Science Academy got a new lab, and some different cabinets and some things they needed, some cameras. We have a new setup with computers at each of the three other traditional high schools now. We have a business lab for Adobe at High Brighton, one at West, and one at South Caldwell. We have also some computers that we're gonna switch over, maybe add a second one at South Caldwell. We have four teachers that are right now are doing online virtual training for their Adobe certification, so they'll be ready to start to teach this. We have, I checked the enrollments, we have students signed up at each school to take these classes. So these are something we've switched out for some of the courses that we've lost, and I think that's gonna be a positive. There's credentials attached to each one of these. It's the Photoshop, and the Premiere, and the video editing, and all this stuff that's really cool and out there that students like to do now, perhaps with all the internet and even the virtual things that we're doing today. Career development, one of the parts of Perkins Five, we had to send out surveys and survey a whole lot of people and things, and businesses, parents, and students, and teachers, and everybody, to see kind of what their thoughts are, or what their needs are, where they see things that are moving to, what they want to see. And with employers, of course, it was the soft skills, workplace readiness skills. Everybody's, you know, says that that's what we need with the students. But we have a course, it's career management. I feel like that really all of our students probably should take this course. We have, it offered only at one high school. This, this year, we increased it by one teacher there. We added a couple sections at another high school this spring. But next year, we're gonna have this at all three high schools, and that's another thing that we're gonna do to replace some of the personal finance classes that we lost. We're gonna replace that with career management. We have a teacher working on converting that one to virtuals also, so that'll be out there. There's credentials attached to this one. It's a work flexibility credential. There's eight credentials, and they go through each of the sections, like responsibility, how to get along with other people, collaboration, partnerships, see more of that kind of thing. So that should help our students with that. Health science, one of the, two of the big, I save these last two for last, health science and construction. Two of the biggest industries that we have a need for, especially in Caldwell County and everywhere for health science. We need to keep all of our certifications going there. So what we're doing, I took, only had one teacher that was trained to be in a CPR instructor, and I was using her everywhere. I was taking her out of her classroom and sending her to go do all the, and I just got to where I couldn't take, I just felt like that was too much of a burden on her, where she was missing too much class time. So this spring, we sent all of our health science teachers, even the ones at the middle school, we have, we have six that we sent to be trained as CPR certified instructors. Then March came, and when they were in the middle of doing their own hands-on part that they have to do for, for finish their credential, and we're gonna have to wait till they have time to do that. We also added stop complete certification and first aid certification. And we always have had our CNA One license for our students, and we have worked really hard, Dr. Phipps has, and everyone together, trying to make sure that our students can finish out those hours they needed to get their state license exam taken, which will take place in the next couple weeks. And so the students that were involved in that course is gonna be able to continue on. So that's been something weighing a burden on me, and I know Dr. Phipps too, to try to make this happen, because it's quite an impossible situation, but we, we were able to do that.
Heard from families that they're very appreciative that those, those students were able to get those clinicals, and that y'all really did go the extra mile to make that happen, because that would impact the courses kids were eligible to take for the first year.
These are seniors. Every student in that course was a senior, and their goal maybe was to go to be a nurse or whatever. And then in August, when they went to, they were supposed to have this in order to get into nursing. So that was something very important, that we, it's almost a daily task we worked on and to kind of make that happen. So I'm glad that it, it all worked out. Everybody's feeling good. They're gonna be taking their test, I think, next week, and everything will be good with that. So construction, we have two vacancies, and we're gonna be able to replace both those vacancies. We've had a teacher that we're able to move, because we had some, we lost the personal finance courses, and there wasn't that many business courses to split there, and that teacher had an interest in this, and we were able to switch one over. The other position we're still working on, to make sure that one gets replaced. But it's important that we get the right person in the right place, especially when a vacancy comes up. We here from business and industry, especially in the construction field, of what they need in the classroom, who they need in the classroom, somebody that's gonna have these students, you know, not just learn skills, but ready to go to work, understand what more the work means. So we're gonna be working on that. We have our NCCR certifications, and we've always had those, and they're doing great. They're almost 100%, just about 100% of students in all these classes get their NCCR credential certification. We're gonna add the OSHA 10-hour construction safety certification. That's something we've heard from business and industry. They'd like those students to come out with that OSHA safety certification, ready to go. And we are trying to, this is something brand new, we haven't had time yet to talk to the teachers and figure out exactly how to make this happen. I wanna finish the school year before we throw anything else on the teachers right now. But we need to start building something in our classes, and get the, you know, the enrollment's not great. We need to do something to motivate students to, to want to take the construction classes and to see the purpose, instead of just trying to do something as a practice, that they're really making something that's useful, and then they can see, you know, feel before their eyes as they're working on it. So we're gonna try a tiny house project, and we'll see how that goes. Kathy, you'll do the next slide for me. I've got some pictures here, you know, other schools are doing this, across, all across the United States. This picture, this is from somewhere, maybe in Nevada or California or somewhere, I think. That's a picture of the end product and the students there working on it. They've been doing this for a few years, so it's not like this is something brand new. This is like three years old here, so each year they'll do one. And I think on the next picture, these are the students there, I think, still working on that. They had three of these going, so this, they have progressed up to where they had three. And there's all three sitting under their little covered area that they're working on. So you've seen the little practice walls, you know, and I'm thinking to myself, if I'm a student, and how, how long is it gonna take me to get bored if I'm walking in and working on, working on a little practice wall every day, then tear it down and build it back, tear it down. But if I'm working on something that I know at the end of the school year, it's gonna be a finished product, and it's gonna mean something. What they do with these, they'll auction them off at the end of the school year and recoup the money. So we only need seed money the first year to get us going, then that, that seed money we put back in, students will have enough money then to make their next one. Then they'll be free and clear of the debt. If they start making a little bit of profit on each one, they'll add it in to buy some more equipment or do whatever they need to do. Closer to home, this is West Henderson High School in Henderson County. So it's not just people way out west that are doing this, it's local, kind of local too. I talked to the director to see how that was going, and they were having it out for bid when I talked. I think they were bidding it out, they were trying to get around $50,000, I think was their minimum bid. I think there was $30,000, maybe $1,000 worth of materials that went into it. So they had it out for bid when I talked to them. They have, in the Asheville area, a Builders Expo at the Western North Carolina Ag Center there each year. And all the high schools that build these bring them there, and they put them out for auction. That's where, you know, people all over the state go to that Builders Expo, and they'll auction those off. Now, I don't know if we get one, and we finish with it, and it's ready to go, I don't know if they'll let us in up there to auction ours off there or not. But, you know, I'm, I'm envisioning the Hickory Metro Trade Center down here with the Building Expo, and maybe high schools around in our area can do the same thing. So I don't wanna forget about our middle schools, and this is a little tricky. Kathy, can you click on the picture? Is there a way to do that with the mouse?
On it, anywhere.
Yeah, click, click on it. This is something I'm gonna do for the middle schools, and it's important for them to visualize and see what CTE is, because some students may not even know what that is. There you go, it opens up a book. So it's a little guide or a book, and Kathy, if you just wanna flip through those pretty quick. It tells them what CTE is, gives them some data, some instructions there, certifications, career pathways. Now, right here, this is a career assessment. This is a little test they take, and we give this to every eighth grader and ninth grader. And if they'll check those little boxes and total up the number at the bottom, it will tell the students what their aptitude is toward a certain area. And it'll tell them what kind of careers are lined up with that. And Kathy, if you wanna go all the way to the very last page, and then back up one page. And then at the end, this is a plan for the future. It's like a four-year plan, something they can keep and work on. So this, what they should do in ninth grade, this is freshman year, sophomore, junior, senior. So it gets them to start thinking about what they're good at according to that test that they would take, and then what kind of jobs are related to, and what the outlook for that job is. And then here's how they can plan their future or their next four years. Now, I think if we start this and give this to the eighth graders, it will get them to thinking about their pathway, thinking about what, you know, we do this in our classes anyway, but if they have this, maybe it's something that they can use. It's a visual. We'll have our career development coordinator go there and work with all the eighth graders and distribute this and work with them. They can take it home, their parents can look at it, and it'll give them something tangible that they can hold on to. We, we use CFNC online for them to do this kind of work and it's something they can always log into and have. But this will be a little book with our guide or something we can do there to start working with our middle schools with their career plans. And that wraps up the updates and the presentation. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Living, for that presentation. And I don't know about you, but this always gets me excited about where we're headed with career, taking a reflection, opportunities for our students and for the community to see that what, that the opportunities are there within our schools to do a variety of different options that they have within their school. So thank you. Mr. Pennell, can I go on to the next two items?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So we also, on the agenda, we have summer learning and remote instruction. So just to give you a little bit of background, as part of House Bill 1043, we are required to do summer learning for, in reading and math for our rising first through fifth graders. There is a small pot of money attached with that as part of House Bill 1043, but that's going to be divided among all of the public school districts in North Carolina and the charter schools. So we also included some funding, funding in our COVID-19 that I know is later on in the agenda as well. But we will be doing some summer learning with that. We also, with the monies that we were getting from our application for the COVID-19 funds, we'll be doing some things at the middle school and the high school. High school will be more credit recovery. We're still waiting on some official guidelines from DPIs to what their requirement will be. More than likely, it probably will be remote learning, unless you're given different guidelines from Governor Cooper and/or from the State Department of Education or the Department of Public Instruction about reentry into the schools. But we will be providing some opportunities for certainly our elementary students in reading and math. And then we're looking at some, trying to do some virtual camps for our middle school because they traditionally haven't had a lot of opportunities in the summer and then credit recovery at the high school level. So we will be doing some summer learning this summer. In addition to that, as part of Senate Bill 704, we have our remote instruction plan that we have to create. And you'll actually see that before the board in the July meeting. That has to be approved by the Board of Education. Part of the plan within calendar this year, we will have five remote learning days. So those will be incorporated into the remote instruction plan as well as more long-term remote learning. So in the event that we can't be face-to-face or face-to-face with all students in August, here is our plan for remote learning and remote instruction for the 2020, 2021 school year. There are going to be 13, there are 13 requirements for the plan from the legislature and then the state board added two more requirements to the plan. So it will be 15 points in the plan, but you'll get a more detailed explanation. We're just in the process of figuring out what it is that we need to do. If you saw, I think from Living posted something about surveys, we are currently surveying parents, teachers and students about their remote learning experiences so that we can take that feedback and use it as we design what this will look like in 2020, 2021. So if a parent's asking you, should I fill out the survey? Please encourage them to fill out the survey because we need that feedback to make sure that we can address the needs, their needs as a parent, as well as the needs of their students in addressing what our teachers need to make sure that they're prepared to continue remote learning if we need to in the 2020. Any questions about that? You'll see me again in July.
Thank you, Dr. McKellen. Next, on the agenda, we have a closed session down here, a motion that we'll go to closed session.
Chairman Pennell, I'm moved that we go into closed session pursuant to the current agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And we will be in closed session for a few minutes here. And Student Support Services with Mr. Travis Gillespie and Robert Sempit. So I'd like to let you all know that that doesn't require a vote, but certainly want to make you aware of it. Item number two, I want to give you an update on the 2020, 2021 calendar, both for traditional schools and for the Applied Sciences Academy and our early college. The first calendar that you saw that was a draft after we dealt with the changes that were required by the General Assembly actually included some extra days that we put in. We were able to go back and get a little bit more clarification on what the intent was on the law. And what we're required to do is to add five remote learning days into our calendar and we had to increase the number of student days by five days. We went in on, on a second pass through and were able to create remote learning days primarily on days that we had originally scheduled as planning days. And because they're remote learning days now, they can be counted as student days. So we were able to get remote learning days added and student days added at the same time. The big point of all of this is it allows us, we have to start on the 17th of August. We had already scheduled a start date on the 17th of August, but our ending date will be the Friday before Memorial Day. And you can see that in the bottom left-hand corner, the little purple square that's there in the month of May. Right there where Kathy's at. That would be the ending time that we have. And then the early college and the Applied Sciences Academy calendar, probably closer to what we have on our traditional side than we have been. And the reason for that is that we have the early start date for ourselves that we had created on the 17th, which is now state mandated for a year. And you can see their calendar there as well. We're not asking for approval today. We wanted to just share these with you for review. And then we'll be bringing these back on Monday night at our board meeting for approval. But these do meet the requirements that are now in legislation for the upcoming year home. Item 5C, I just want to give you an update on the COVID-19 funds and the grant update. We've been talking quite a bit the last few months of different pots of money that will be made, made available. And this came up some in our conversation that we had a few months, a few weeks ago as well when we were looking at some other items of interest. We received a pot of $450,000 that was CARES money that came to us that was restricted for either remote learning, childcare, cleaning buildings and buses, child nutrition, some restrictions like that that we're, that we're working on. That $450,000 would be used for those purposes. There's an additional $2.3 million that's available through the federal government that we had to make an application for. Katrina and Lisa and the, the rest of the curriculum team have done that work. That was due today. We've made the request and I think we've already heard that. We received the full amount of $2.3 million that we requested. And, and that's not a, just a pot of money that's brand new. There are specific things that we have to do. The summer camp that we're required to do by law, the jump start work that has to be done, the remote learning efforts that we're carrying on, child nutrition work. There's just many, many things. As you heard today, there are a lot of different areas of criteria that we have to meet. And so from that point of view, I would say the 2.3 is restricted to that type of work. We wouldn't have been able to do it out of our regular budget, but it's required now and we have to fund it. We have an additional bit of money that's come in that David's working with in finance and it's very restricted on what we can't do with it. A lot of it looks like it would go in the area of child nutrition. So we're trying to figure out through the states how, how those restrictions can really be worked. It's, it's another pot of money that would help us. I think you heard Guy say, if I wrote it down correctly, about $574,818 meals. You know, there's, there's food that has to be purchased. There's labor that's involved with that. There's diesel fuel, the use of the buses, all of those things that come into play as we're dealing with meal distribution. We're hoping that this extra money that we've gotten would help pay for that. So we'll give you an update. But we are working with every opportunity for grant funding or other funding sources that come available to help us do the work that we're doing, not just now, but down the road as we continue. I, I wanted to give you a reentry update for 5D for the 2020, 21 reentry of school in August. And right now, I can't tell you anything. I've heard a lot of rumors out in the public and I can tell you 100% accurate with, with full disclosure, those are all rumors at this point. The Department of Health and Human Services is going to have a meeting with our state school board on Wednesday. And we have a call Wednesday afternoon. And at that point, I think we'll have a little bit more guidance. What we're going to hear about is guidance on reopening and reentry. This could be, you know, use of personal protective equipment, what's going to be required. You know, we don't know the answer to all these things yet. What do mass gatherings look like? What about athletics? What about banning course in cafeterias? Are we going to be scanning students? We don't know the answer to that. So I can't tell you that we will or we won't. We just don't know yet. Will there be some kind of an alternating schedule with students? Will students be eating in their classrooms instead of cafeterias? All of those are things that we've heard. We just don't know yet. So we're waiting for guidance from the Department of Health and Human Services. And there are six work groups that are going on right now across the state that are dealing with things like reentry. And once we have that information, we'll be sharing that with you. And I feel comfortable that we'll have more guidance when we meet on the 8th. I can share some of that publicly. I'm a little concerned right now that we're talking about early June. We have no idea what's going to happen in the next 60 days. So you all know, August may look very different depending on what happens. So the guidance that we get is going to be guidance as of June. Don't know whether or not that will carry any weight when we get into August, but I can at least share with you what we're dealing with. We'll also be talking in just a couple of minutes about athletic guidance and the things that are going on throughout the school system and across the state. And then the jump start stuff that you heard Dr. McKellen mention. We have allotments and guidance in the next, this coming week right now. It's going to be a busy week this week that we're in. We'll get our allotments and our guidance for what they're calling jump start. And there's a webinar on June the 2nd for technical pieces that our staff members will get. So we're talking about things right now that we haven't gotten details about, but we will have those this week. So we'll be sharing that with you as much as we can. Dr. McKellen also mentioned Senate Bill 704 and House Bill 140, 1043. These are two COVID bills. There's some legislative work that's going on with that that may involve a little bit of tweaking that has to be done on, on different pieces. And we'll give you some updates when that comes along as well. Item 5E is the High School Athletic Association update. And I was going to ask Dr. Church, he sent something out this morning, if he wants to talk about that a little bit, you can. We had a, we had an original start date back June the 1st, and I think everybody knew that June 1st was too early. And we decided we weren't going to do that. And then the High School Athletic Association decided to push back at the date. And I think right now we're looking at June the 15th and kind of waiting to see what happens on June the 15th. Kathy, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, speaking with our high school athletic director, they're thinking, June 15th may not happen either. It might be pushed off more. I shared a document with you, it's up on the screen. Derek Reeves has put this together with help with our other two athletic directors, Jeff Farren and Steven Masters, plus athletic directors across the district. And it's returned to play and it's a work in progress. I received this last week. He sent me something when you were in closed session, an update that he and his trainers have been working on. So we have shared this with the Health Department and they are, they're good with what we're doing. So we do have a plan in place whenever that dead season gives open.
We'll continue to work on that again, looking for guidance in terms of how we do, even the athletic piece. And, and, you know, if you were to do sporting events, what do they look like? And what are, what are the audience, the folks over there that are in the stands? What are the limitations? We don't know the answer to those yet either. 5F, it took us a while to get to a point where we felt like we knew what we wanted to do in the area of high school graduation. I'll be honest with you, we were waiting this out to see if there were going to be some changes from the executive order. With the last executive order that came out said that the mass gatherings did not apply to educational institutions. And we felt like that opened the door for us to be able to have outdoor graduations, very similar to the Air Force Academy style, social distancing, limiting the number of people that came in. And we got word back on, that that executive order came out on a Monday or Friday. We got word back that the exemption did not apply to public schools with respect to graduation. So we're still under the limitations that we were. The executive order does allow us to have some summer learning camps and things like that after the school year is over. So our, our plan, and I won't say this, just about a year's on the same page and the public is aware of this as well. I had multiple meetings with high school principals, multiple meetings. We also had meetings with representatives from our seniors because my feeling was that the graduation activity is the culmination of their years of work and we want this to be meaningful for them. And we offered the ability for us to delay the service and have a, a traditional ceremonial type of a graduation service and tell them that we may have to wait or we could look at some other options. And I think initially the idea was to hang on and wait and we hoped that we'd be able to do it. We know right now that even into the third or fourth week of July, we're going to be limited on mass number of gatherings. I have no idea what's going to happen from July to August and beyond. So our, our traditional high schools decided that they wanted to get ahead and work on putting something together. West Caldwell, their students wanted to have individual ceremonies. And that these, as you all know, are going to be scheduled Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of this week. Students will come in for about 10 minutes. They'll be in a full regalia. They'll have an opportunity to bring family members in with them. They'll walk across, they'll get a diploma. They'll have their time there. And we're going, it's going to take about three days to get that done. The other, the other two highs, South Caldwell and West, and I've read, are going to do more of a drive-in approach. The drive-in piece would be students would come in, limited to one vehicle passenger car for, our student passenger vehicle for students. There'd be an actual ceremony that will be live that they'll have the opportunity to witness. And then students will come down in groups of 20 and they'll be allowed to come across and get their diplomas. That'll happen at West, at South Caldwell and I've read. And then the Applied Sciences Academy has already done a individualized graduation. And they're, they're hopeful that they'll be able to do a more of a formal ceremony, traditional type of a meeting. They've got that scheduled the first week in August. I can't remember the exact dates. I have those in front of me. The 5th, 6th and 7th, I think, are the dates of the Applied Sciences Academy. The early college is going to do theirs then, and then the community college has graduations. But we're not clear yet whether or not the restrictions are going to be lifted for indoor gathering. So those dates have been put out just to kind of hold. Craig Styron has also, in addition to the individual graduations, he's, he's scheduled the civic centers of the 31st of July. And he'd like to do an indoor traditional ceremony if he can, but the idea there being we may have to push that back. So he wanted to at least get the individual portions of those done. What does that mean? It means that our schools are doing something different at each school. But those schools, we gave them permission. You all said you wanted to allow us to work with the principals and the seniors. And there were surveys done, there was feedback provided. And this is one of those situations where there's no solution that we can come up with that's going to satisfy everybody. I know it's going to hurt some people in terms of the number of guests that they have. It's going to hurt others because they prefer to have their students in an auditorium with all of their peers. And we just can't do both of those things at the same time because we have limitations that we have to abide by. I've listened, listened to the feedback from a lot of other districts that have had graduation ceremonies in the prior two weeks. And those have been everything other than traditional. And I think they've gone off well, all things considered. And I heard for our seniors, I, I heard for the family members that have always thought about what it was going to be like for those graduation ceremonies. But we want to make these as meaningful as we can and we'll continue to do that work. So I'm excited. This week is a week of graduation for us. Again, we'll look different than it has, but, you know, we, we look forward to being able to bestow the honors and the privileges and the opportunities on our seniors that they've long and their families have long waited for. So that was my graduation update. Our policy revision that we're going to, we put up, Kathy, do we need anything on this or this?
It's just with their information.
This, this, one of several policies that you all are probably going to see in, in the weeks and months ahead. This is Policy 2302, remote participation in board meetings. And this has come out of the COVID-19 and a different way of operations that we have. So I wanted you to be aware of that. And then for the end of year wrap-up, and Katrina, if you want to chime in on this, you certainly can. This is the week that students will be coming back to school in small numbers to pick up some of their belongings. We have teachers that'll be on campus more. We're trying to have more of a return to work, but doing it in an organized fashion so that we don't violate any of the requirements that we have in terms of safety and what our government's executive order is. No more than 10 people in a, in a gathering indoors in a room. And we also want to make sure that students have the opportunity to get any items, either pick them up from school or bring items back that they have had at home. So we have a lot of that going on this week. Certainly different than what any end of the year ever has been that we're dealing with and we're trying to make the most of it. My, my last item is item 5I with other information. The only thing that I've got on my list that I've not covered with you really deals with funding and the budget. David and I talked many times in, in any given week about where we're at with the budget. And, you know, I mentioned when we started talking about budget and we got into the month of March, it was pretty evident that we were going to be operating different, in a different manner than we normally do. But we may have an opportunity to be able to seize some funds that we haven't spent. And, and the reason for that And, and the reason for that is if you just think about substitute costs that we budgeted for that we haven't had to spend, the cost of diesel fuel that we haven't had to spend for buses, our utility costs that are out there, and then things like, you know, the conferences and conventions and activities that people are involved in. There's a registration fee for that. There's per diem for meals, there's travel that goes along with that, there's regular travel that happens in, in, in any given month. Because all of those things are gonna be still unspent to some degree, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to be able to get through this school year and not have the impact on our fund balance that we thought we would. And David and I have talked, and, and with, with questions about what the reaction from the public would be on that, I wanna be very honest about it. You know, we're, we're grateful that we've got an opportunity to not spend what we thought we would want to. I, I hate, it's, it, it really bothers me that it's coming at the expense of COVID nineteen and, and the, the things that, that the public has incurred from that, including death, but certainly uh, jobs that have been lost and other things like that. But we, you know, we can't budget year in and year out expecting some type of a pandemic or calamity that's gonna come along, that's gonna cause us to operate differently, so you know, at the end of the year, I am hopeful that we'll be able to share with you a, a brighter picture that, that has been bestowed upon us through a pandemic that we certainly didn't expect or couldn't predict, but we don't know yet what the final outcome will be. Uh, we feel like some of the funding that we've gotten here will help us offset some of the costs, but I, I know there's some folks that feel like we've gotten extra funds here. These, these funds are here because we're having to do extra things that we weren't gonna do otherwise, and they're limited and restricted, and it causes us to have to spend within certain categories, but I, I hope to be able to come back to you in the month of July and to the public and be able to say, you know, we've got a target that we've been chasing for a couple of years, and this is where we are with the current updates. But understand that there was an artificial infusion of some funding this year that we didn't expect and we can't count on down the road, but uh, we continue to look at that. We continue to work on budgets and the cost savings and the, the work that we're trying to do to be as fiscally responsible and, and as strong a financial position as we can do, so don't be surprised if we come back and we say that we've been able to finish out this school year, and this is what we actually dealt with from fund balance, and we don't know what that number's gonna look like yet, but I want you to understand and the public to understand why we're at that point, and, and we feel that that's positive. That's all I have to do.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but we needed to approve to put the calendars on a comment period, to be approved on June eighth.
So those would be on, on, that's for public review, starting today, and then we would vote on it on June the eighth. They've been out and circulated quite a bit, uh, just the draft versions, I think folks have seen, but we would like that, to fiscally respect that.
Okay, I'll hear a motion that we approve the two thousand twenty, twenty-one calendar update for the uh, uh, traditional schools as well as those for the Applied Science Academy and the early college high schools.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I understood that it was worth to put it up for comment period.
True, that's true.
Not to approve it.
Not to approve. We're not, we're not approving. It's, it, it is for a thirty-day comment period. Well, actually.
It's just one late.
Until the next week.
So it's a.
It, it will be for a comment period until our next board meeting.
I move that we put the um, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one calendar updates for the traditional schools and for the CASA and the early college high school on a comment period until we meet next week. Second motion.
Okay, any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Any other items, anything else from the board? Okay, that being the case, uh, your motion be adjourned. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? And motion passes.